Good morning. Happy Friday. The hour of convening has arrived on this beautiful day, and the Senate will now come to order. At this time, I'd like to ask that all unauthorized persons exit our chamber. I'd like to recognize the unusually well put together Senator from the 53rd.
Mr. President, and let me thank you for notifying me of that, and I'm kind of like a Picasso, I guess, being put together. But I'm just glad to be here today, and it's going to be a great weekend because we're going to reflect over such a busy time and an important time. The Journal's been read and found to be correct.
I think what made Picasso unique was that it wasn't well put together. It was more on the abstract side. Is there objection to dispensing with the reading of the Journal? The Chair here is none, and the reading of the Journal is dispensed with. Is there objection to the confirmation of the Journal? The Chair here is none, and the Journal is confirmed. All Senators who have bills and resolutions, please bring them to the Secretary's desk at this time. Chair recognizes the Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think what the Rules Chair was saying, he was more like a dolly because he is somewhat surreal. But that being said, I move that we dispense -- come on now, it's early. I move that we dispense with the morning roll call.
The Majority Leader has moved that we dispense with the morning roll call. Is there objection? The Chair here is none, and the morning roll call is waived. All right, the Senate will come back to order. We got through our first part of business so quickly, we outsped the Chaplain of the Day. So it's my honor that all Senators, please take your seats and cease all audible conversations. Doorkeepers, please secure the chamber at this time. I'd like to recognize the Minority Leader to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance today and to introduce to us our Chaplain of the Day.
Good morning, everyone. I'll lead you in the pledge. "A pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all." Georgia flag?
A pledge allegiance to the Georgia flag. It's the principle of state, wisdom, justice, moderation.
It is my absolute pleasure this morning to introduce our Chaplain of the Day. Her name is Pastor Jillian Lee, with an A, Twigs. Pastor Jillian Lee Twigs serves as the pastor of Student Ministry at Berean Christian Church in Stone Mountain, which is my church, where Dr. Curran B. Lee, L.E.E., is Senior Pastor. Jillian gives leadership to members nursery aged to 30 years old and aims to demonstrate to them and others the value they possess in the body of Christ. Proud to becoming the pastor of Student Ministry, she was the youth minister and young adult praise and worship leader at Berean. Jillian recognized her call to ministry at a young age, serving in various capacities in her home church and community. It was not until her senior year in college that she accepted and pursued her call to preaching and ministry vocationally. Pastor Jill is a native of Fairfield, California, located in the North Bay Area. She obtained her Bachelor of Arts degree in Political Science and Spanish from Spelman College in Atlanta. Jillian is a spring 2021 graduate of Canlin School of Theology at Emory University in Atlanta, obtaining her Master of Divinity with an emphasis on theology as ethics and practical ministry. A lover of God's Word and God's people, Pastor Jill aims to proclaim the truth of Jesus Christ by living a life reflective of worship to God, her Savior. When she is not serving in ministry, Jillian enjoys traveling and engaging with her long chapter of Delta Sigma Theta. Jillian is the proud wife of LeBert J. Twigs Jr., the wonderful daughter of Clayborne Lee Jr., and Janelle Lee, and the loving sibling of Clayborne Lee III, Christopher Lee and Jessica Lee. Please welcome Jillian Lee.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. A pleasure it is to be here this morning with you all. This is a little bit of a full circle moment for me. As you heard in my bio, I was a Political Science major at Spelman College about five or so years ago, and I was an intern with the Georgia Legislative Black Caucus. And so to kind of be in these spaces again in a time that I thought that part of my career and dreams was over is such a pleasure. So thank you all for having me. I want to thank Senator Gloria Butler and her staff and everyone who made this possible. Just wonderful to be here and grateful to my pastor for the opportunity to come and be with you all today. Won't be before you long, but I just wanted to gather and take a moment to center us today on this cold Friday morning as you guys embark upon another day of making decisions and reviewing things and having committee meetings. I wanted to offer you something special today. As we move toward more responsibilities, new business, again, further discussions, a litany of agenda items, I wanted to take the next few moments just to put a pause on today's tasks and take a deep breath and endeavor with me to power through the storms that can pervade around us, the storms of decision-making, the storms of family obligations, the storms of the duties that you all carry every single day. So again, as we set this intention for today, I encourage you, if you so choose, to remove anything from your hands if you just have a few moments, just to kind of relax your body as you feel comfortable and are able, and just walk with me as we take a moment to breathe and to just have a brief meditation and reflection. Whether you want to sit up straight in your chair, whether you want to place your feet firmly on the ground, whatever you do in this moment, just allow yourself to be grounded and to be present in what we are doing. You're free to close your eyes as you're comfortable, again, and be present in this space and in this time. Finally, I ask you to take one hand and place it on your chest, and another hand and place it on your stomach, feeling not only your heartbeat, but the expanse of air that we are about to breathe. And I ask you, upon my prompting, to inhale slowly and exhale, and we'll begin together. Go ahead and inhale and exhale. Just centering yourself in this moment. You can inhale and exhale. You can inhale the mercies of a new day and exhale the unresolved challenges of yesterday. You can inhale peace and exhale the overwhelm of pervasive responsibilities. You can inhale joy and exhale the cloud of anxiety that attempts to obstruct your view of clear skies and a sanguine world. You can inhale sufficiency and exhale the lie that you are not enough. You can inhale duty and exhale an inclination toward apathy. Inhale and exhale. Inhale and exhale. As you're ready, I invite you to gently open your eyes, welcome yourself back to this moment in our devotion. Often, we do not realize the rarity that it is to just stop and breathe. Life and breath is such a gift to us, and I wanted to offer that to you all as we continue with our devotion and this session. I wanted to leave you with something as we take the time to breathe and really center ourselves for what we're going to embark upon today. You all know exactly what that means for you, and I want to share with you something that has been very helpful to me in my journey through life, particularly my profound astonishment for the eagle. The eagle, more specifically, the Aquila eagle is one of my favorites, largely because of the qualities that the eagle possesses that set them apart from any other bird species, namely, one of their best qualities being how they respond to a storm, a physical storm. As they're flying through the airways, storms may come, rain comes, clouds come, and many other birds land. They ground themselves when rain comes. They stop flying south for the winter, or they stop in their pursuit for a meal that day, and they land on the ground seeking cover, seeking shelter that they might let the storm pass, and they resume their daily activities. What I love about the Aquila eagle is that, as opposed to grounding during a storm, the eagle actually rises above the storm, above the clouds, getting as high as it can possibly go, and flies through the storm. For it's through the storm that their wings are elevated, that the wind is caught underneath their wings, and they are propelled through and to their destination. And their nature, the way they have been crafted and created, is to not ground themselves, but to fly higher and through. And so as we take these moments to breathe, as we take these moments to center ourselves for this day, as we take these moments to recognize the things that are around us, the storms that might be overcoming us, I encourage you today to be like the eagle that has encouraged me so deeply, and to fly higher and through the various storms. If you need to take a moment to inhale and exhale, do so, but be like the eagle that does not run from adversity, that does not run from challenges, but finds a way to endure through them, to persevere, to get through to the end. And so wherever that meets you today, I hope that it's helpful, just a very simple reminder of the way that creation just speaks to us, and the ways that we're able to take things that may seem very miniscule, may not have caught our attention before, and really use that as a catalyst to push us forward. Wherever you find yourself today in the storm, take a moment to breathe, but also find a way to fly higher and fly through. Thank you all for your time today. Have a great, great day.
Senate will come back to order. Are there any unanimous consents? The Chair sees none. Does any Senator wish to rise on a point of personal privilege? Chair recognizes the Senator from the 34th for a point of personal privilege.
Good morning, colleagues. As we prepare to celebrate our ATL, Atlanta Braves, in our parade today, I wanted to not only congratulate them, but I want to ask you all to join me in a moment of silence for Jovita Moore. I know I spoke of her on yesterday. I do have the resolution over on the side there for anybody that wants to sign it, but if we can, I'd ask for --
Senator has asked for us to rise for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair recognizes the Senator from the 35th for a point of personal privilege. Chair recognizes the Senator from her desk for a point of personal privilege.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Senators, we've had a lot of losses with Jovita Moore, but also General Colin Powell is being buried today, and our very own Senator, Lester Jackson's youngest brother, passed away with COVID, I believe, out of the blue, and he's being buried tomorrow. So I would like to give condolences to all of them, and also, I'll call him my cousin, but it's through marriage. My late husband, Elmo James, was related to a great man that served in the House for so many years, Len Moore James, and he is being funeralized tomorrow in Monizuma. So for all of these wonderful people and great Georgians, I'd like to ask that you give a moment of silence as well for all of them.
Senators asked for us to rise for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you.
Are there any additional points of personal privilege? The Chair sees none. Got a couple of privileged resolutions. Will the Secretary please read them?
Senate Resolution 6EX by Senator James of the 35th and others, a resolution honoring the life and memory of Representative Len Moore James and for other purposes.
Is there objection to adoption of the resolution? The Chair here is none, and the resolution is adopted.
Senate Resolution 7EX by Senators Mullis of the 53rd and others, a resolution congratulating the Atlanta Braves and for other purposes. Whereas on November 2nd, 2021, the Atlanta Braves claimed their first World Series title since 1995 after shutting down the Houston Astros 7 to nothing, finishing the series with four wins and two losses. And whereas after securing an early lead, the Braves utilized their superior pitching and landed numerous home runs in order to close out the game, allowing the Astros only six hits and three at bats with runners in scoring position. And whereas Jorge Soler was named as the 2021 World Series MVP for his outstanding performance, joining the ranks of Hank Aaron, Lonnie Smith, and Ryan Klesko. And whereas this victory gives the city of Atlanta its first major professional sports league championship title since the Atlanta United won the MLS Cup in 2018. And whereas the phenomenal performance of the team is a clear indication of the outstanding athletic ability, dedication, hard work, and unity of purpose and spirit of each of the members of the team. And whereas, as this magnificent team earned its well-deserved reputation for excellence by performing with courage and precision over months of training and competition, it is abundantly proper to call them champions. Now therefore be it resolved by the Senate that the members of this body congratulate the Atlanta Braves for winning the 2021 World Series title and extend sincere best wishes for their continued success on the field and beyond. That completes the order.
The Rules Chairman should have a future as a sportswriter. That was incredible. Is there objection to adoption of that fine resolution? The Chair here is none, and the resolution is adopted. Are there any motions to withdraw and commit? The Chair recognizes the Majority Leader for an important motion.
Mr. President, I move that the Senate stand adjourned until 1:00 PM on Monday, 8 November, 2021 pursuant to House Resolution 2EX.
Mr. Secretary, can you please read any announcements?
The Rules Committee meeting scheduled for after adjournment today has been canceled. The reapportionment and redistricting committee will meet in room 450 at 11 o'clock AM today. That completes the order, Mr. President.
Are there any Senators with additional announcements? Chair sees none. The Majority Leader has moved that the Senate stand adjourned until Monday, November 8th, 2021 at 1:00 PM. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye. Opposed, no? The ayes. The ayes obviously have it. The Senate stands adjourned. Have a great weekend.